Start our July meeting, Prescott City Council. All right, we'll start our meeting of the Prescott City Council for July. And we want to start off with, I wrote down five positive accomplishments this month that people did that need to be noticed. First of all, Hayborn Championship Wrestling. It started like two years in Prescott. And it started with like thirty people coming to the shows. And now, Saturday night, we had close to three hundred. And about eighty-five percent of them are coming from out of town. I talked to people from Dallas, Shreveport, Mountain View, Russellville, Billy Hall, and John and Samantha Hayes. If you see them, thank them for bringing the Hayborn Championship Wrestling to town. It's turned out real good. The people that are attending are using our businesses, getting gas and food, et cetera. Our fireworks show was excellent, a little over twenty-nine minutes. I also went to one in central Arkansas where a town had a population of about eight to ten thousand. And ours was really a lot better than theirs. We want to thank Jamie, she not here today. Jamie, she was the Ramrod. She did a lot of work on this. Jamie and Jade at the Chamber. David Gummison in the fire department, they lit the fireworks. They had a real organized team. They put safety first, did a real good job. Chris Hopper, sanitation department, they were in charge of picking up the thousands and thousands of little pieces of paper that were all on the baseball field and the football field and track. The third one, y'all might not have heard, Ms. Mary, Ms. Mary Godwin is now the president of SADA. And SADA is the Southwest Arkansas Development Alliance. It's made up of economic people and elected officials, all the way from El Dorado to De Queen. So that's an honor for a Prescott person to be the president, because there's some big towns in our region. We're one of the smallest, probably. So y'all tell Mary congratulations when y'all talk to her. Okay. This summer, we've been blessed to have my daughter Tessa, Tessa Oliver, at the youth center. She works out of the Hope Educational Southwest Arkansas Co-op. But she's highly regarded, special education teacher, really good at her craft, and she's helping with the youth center this summer. Most teachers like to take their summers off, but she really loves to help kids, so she's helping us out this summer at the youth center. Also, the fifth thing, Shanta Wiley, our office manager here, she's took over the Facebook page for the Prescott Youth Center. She's the administrator of it now, and she's done an excellent job with it. So if you see these five, congratulate them for helping Prescott and being positive this summer and doing good things even while it's hot outside. All right, we'll stand, and Satara Williams will lead our open prayer, and we'll follow that with a pledge of allegiance.
Lord, we thank you for another day. Lord, we thank you for another opportunity as a county to assemble together for the business of the city. Oh God, to give us wisdom and guidance, oh God, we need to make the decisions that are pleasing in your sight. Oh God, to you to watch over our city and our nation. It's in Jesus's name we do prayer. Amen.
Amen. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, everybody should have a copy of the June minutes from that meeting. We need to get approval of those.
Mr. Mayor, the official office, move the approval of June twenty-four minutes.
Yeah.
Okay, Curry?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
All right, everyone should have a copy of the June financials. We need to get approval of those. Okay, next, under reports, we will have Economic Development Director, Ms. Mary Godwin.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Couple of things I put on your table there, of course, your sales tax information, unemployment is still at three point five percent, which is adequate, and some other information for your review. One of the things that I'm concerned about, and I want you just to be aware of it, because it has the potential to affect our grant abilities in the future, it's the one that's got where it says LMI, that's low to moderate income. And you can see, these are all in the account right here in southwest Arkansas. I got these new updated numbers last week. And you can see where they have the new ones and then the old ones. To qualify for a lot of these grants that we do, the area that you're working in or to qualify to do a grant, you have to be in a low to moderate income area. And that has to be something over fifty percent. Well, if you look at Nevada County, our old numbers were sixty-nine point fifty-nine, so everything in the city qualified for grants that were based on low to moderate income, like our drainage project as an example over here. Well, when you take this home and I had studied it, I've already made a, I guess it'd be a formal complaint or disagreement with them. But if you'll just look there at Nevada County's numbers and all the cities in it, look at your new and look at your old and see what has changed, you can see obviously there are no way these numbers are correct. They've got Bluff City, the old LMI being sixty percent, meaning everything in Bluff City was able to apply for a low to moderate income. Well, now they've got Bluff City at seven point nine percent. No way possible on these numbers. They're based upon the American Community Survey that's sent out with the, not with the census, it's two different things. You have the census that we do every ten years, and then they kick, I don't know how they kick it, this is the federal government, the American Community Survey, and they take those numbers and that's what they come up with. Well, I called Southwest Plankton Development District, and I said, these new numbers are showing nothing, none of our cities or Nevada County can apply for any of these grants now that are low to moderate income. And he looked at it too, and he said, yeah, you're the only county in southwest Arkansas that's, that's showing those kind of numbers. So he called the state, and the state said, no, those numbers aren't correct. So the mayor and I visited within that meeting we were at, I think, last Thursday, and he was going to do a little more research to see what else we could do to disagree with these numbers. Because you can see, I mean, you know, Prescott, like I said, was at sixty-nine, now it's at forty-one, and you've got to be over fifty to apply. And there they've got, look at, and it went from sixty to thirty-two. So this could have some very serious potential impact on us and our grant lighting facilities. I just want you to be aware of it, and it's not going to be an easy fix, but we are working on it, and I'll try to keep posted each month on what we're doing or what a potential solution can be for that problem.
Out of the Tin County area that's on the sheet, that means, if you want to be wealthy, you need to live in Bluff City or Budcock. There's a, all these big towns and everybody, Bluff City and Budcock.
I mean, it's just, it's all, and I even asked them, I said, it's so obviously wrong, is it a typo? And they said, no, their procedure is sound, and there are no typos, and it's perfectly correct, is what they think. Just be aware of that situation.
Did it tell you how they came up with the numbers?
Uh-huh, based upon the American Community Survey that's sent out. People filled that out with all of their income levels. And I said, well, do you think that could be the problem? That some people didn't fill those out in return, and then you just made assumptions? So we're still waiting to hear if that's, if that's correct or not. But anyway, if you have questions after we've looked at it the next few days, give me a call on that. The other item, and Rose Stank is here, and I wanted to visit with you. I did go speak last week at the Rotary Club, and then I went on Thursday night and spoke to Kewanas. I think they mentioned to you last month at the council meeting, they're wanting to get involved, and I think Kewanas is also going to, they are wanting to get involved and do some community service projects, and they're wanting to help mow some of the yards we have in town with people that are senior citizens that do not have the ability, people that are maybe really sick and are not able to, or just other people that have special circumstances, in order to try to help them out on some of the yards that are not being able to be mowed based upon those reasons. So I wanted Rose to kind of talk to y'all a little bit. We actually had one of the yards mowed today by Dennis Pruitt. Now, I want y'all, I want to give y'all a shout, or give Dennis Pruitt a shout out. He's not even in Rotary, but I think he had told them that he had the equipment and was happy to help, and he mowed the yard today. It hadn't been mowed all summer on the corner of, y'all see the little streets?
Green Lawn.
Green Lawn and Walnut, right there on that, right on that corner. He's also going to go up and mow one up a little farther, right behind, about two houses behind Maxine's. I got permission from that lady to let him come onto her property and mow that. So a big shout out to Dennis when you see him. I'm going to let, turn it over to Rose right there.
Well, I want to say that, but I want to tell you that we appreciate last week, Mary paying for the Rotary meeting, and we had Chris Deon, she was there. And I don't remember the other ladies, thanks for the lines, but everybody wants to get involved. Listen, service projects are, community service projects get everybody involved in the community. It's not that one club's better than the other. We found that service clubs really need to provide service. That's what people want to do. And Dennis Pruitt, he read, he heard about it, and he contacted us, and it was remarkable, and that what he's doing, there are other people in the community that want to help like that. One of the things we are going to do is Rotary, since we're all entrepreneurs and very wealthy in Rotary, and so what we're going to do is, there will be occasions where, because we are business people, and people work to understand that, we may not be able to get out and do it, but we're going to hire people, and I notice, I'm sure the city attorney would have some kind of problem unless it's private doing it, because we don't want to have any liability with the city. And we have private people that will do it and will incur the liability itself. The city won't be sponsoring, it'll be the service clubs. I'm still checking on the aspect, if we have a Rotary event, Rotary International covers us. I'm pretty sure Rotary International will not cover us mowing yards. I do think they'll, like food drives, et cetera, like that, they'll cover us, but probably mowing yards, I bet that's going to be a hazy on it. But we'll figure that out. The vote, one of the things you don't want to do is not do anything because you're worried about liability. Now, we have to consider liability, and that's why we're probably going to make sure we have people who are responsible mow those yards, and, you know, watch the bathroom locks and get tossed, those kinds of things. But we're aware of the liability issue, we're going to volunteer to do it. I think we're probably going to talk later on about how to avoid liability with the city attorney, I think we'll do it later after that meeting, and do those kinds of things. But we're excited because we, to be able to help the community, because it's just such a good feeling. And most people in this room know about, well, we're here, I know they'll agree with what I'm about to say, we are so blessed when we're able to help other people. We get a lot more out of it than we do doing it, because it's a blessing where everyone helps. And we do it with the right attitude, and don't talk about how great we are, because that's not what this is about. What it's about is this makes us the best community we can make it, and a place where people, when they make you say with pride, they're from Prescott, and we take care of each other in Prescott, don't we?
Thank you very much. And that's what this handout is. These are three yards that I felt like had the qualifications that the city clubs were looking at, and those were just some suggestions that I gave, gave to the clubs. There is one gentleman has a house on Ralston Road, and he, he did not want anyone to come help him. He said he would be able to, to get, and he was out of faculty, he was working, and he, he didn't want any help. So there's going to be some people that, you know, don't want anyone to help them, and that's okay. You know, the clubs are here just to do, just to do what they can. So we give a shout out to all of those clubs for coming forward. The other thing on the list, I gave you a copy of a lease agreement, and this is with United Career and Education. This is Brittany Moss's business, you know, she has leased what used to be the Smiles Building, that's owned by the city of Prescott. It was Smiles Dentistry, and then when, when they closed down, we worked with Brittany to get in there to do her education classes. And the lease has been up for a couple of months, but now we have our new city attorney, and this is basically just renewing that lease. I think Eric's going to go over some of the high points with you, and Brittany has reviewed this, and everything is fine with hers, so I'm going to let Eric give you the, some of the details on it.
Okay. This is pretty much a standard commercial lease agreement. The term I listed, it's month to month. Oh, actually, this one is, other's month to month. This one's, this one's two-year term. It begins June first, twenty twenty-fourth, May thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, for a thousand dollars a month. I changed up from the previous lease, some of the stuff on maintenance of the building. I added a section about utilities, not the rest of the previous lease, the tenant's responsible for all the utilities. We put in there liability insurance, the tenant will provide for the city, and otherwise it's a pretty standard lease on page twenty-one, or page four, paragraph twenty-one, the tenant shall, his costs and spend, prepare and replace any injuries to the premises of the building or any part thereof. Subletting does not occur without consent of the city. Really, I don't guess there's anything else to say. Does anybody have any questions?
I got a question. I don't know about, if we were to get another Dennis, would she be able to allow that other Dennis to work with her?
We would just have to work with her to see. She, she has a school basically in there where she does training to do CNAs, and she has a whole list of educational things that you can be a student and get certified in.
Okay, so it's up here. It's not, okay.
Yeah, it's where the Dennis used to be.
Okay, I didn't know where it was.
She, and we've had no problems with the building, other than it seems like every year at the beginning of the summer, we have to put a little free on in the air conditioner, but other than that, we've not really had any issues. Her overall goal is to hopefully see if the city will sell that to her within these two years. That, that's her plan. She's, from the very beginning, has been working to get herself established and get that going. She understands that, you know, she would have to come back before the city at that time. We did do an appraisal back when the property was purchased, I better not quote a number, I don't remember what it, what the amount was, but we do have an appraisal on her.
Has she reviewed?
Yeah, she reviewed it today, and everything is fine.
So the motion to lease it to, not over the week, lease this?
I'll relay the motion.
Mr. Tom.
Do I need to read this name?
That's an attorney question.
No.
No, I know, okay. There is a reservation, that has to be passed.
Okay, then, Curry?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
City of Prescott, Arkansas, Resolution one, twenty twenty-four, no but all man, no all men by date spread. Whereas the city of Prescott, Arkansas, desire to leave the building and will second located at fourteen ninety-five West Hurst Street, fourth, Prescott, Arkansas, seven one eight five seven, continue to be leased to United Career and Education LLC, which subjects the premises from Smiles Park, South Lawrence Center, LLC, to the original LLC. Whereas, United Career and Education LLC desires to lease the premises for term two years, beginning January first, twenty twenty-four, and ending May thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Whereas the city of Prescott and United Careers and Education LLC have potentially agreed on the terms of the lease asset forth and the attached lease agreement, for which purposes this resolution is taken. Being now therefore be resolved at the city council for the city of Prescott, Arkansas, does hereby not count through the attached lease agreement by and between the city of Prescott as less work slash landlord and United Careers and Education LLC as less aid slash tenant for the period of June first, twenty twenty-four until May thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, on the terms set forth in said lease agreement, which is approved by the city council and the mayor and the city clerk in court for the city of Prescott, Arkansas, are hereby authorized in the power to protect the said lease agreement to be fully binding and forceful to parties there too. This resolution is adopted by the city council for the Prescott State, for the city of Prescott, in regular session on fifteenth of July, twenty twenty-four. Okay. Motion for the resolution.
So move.
Say it.
Okay, Curry?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Is that it? Go ahead.
I just want to ask a question to make sure I'm clear. I, I agree on this, what do we lease the government factory for, for the trucking company? How much they pay for a month?
They pay three thousand a month for the outside rental, and some pays fifteen oh three a month for the inside.
All right.
And that contract is up here in July for the outside trucking company. And their attorney will be giving us that new contract here this month, so we'll bring that to you in office for your review.
All right, thank you, Mary. All right, in tonight's business, does everybody have a copy of ordinance number two of two thousand and two? Okay. This was a animal control ordinance. Section one was about dog collars required, section two, vaccination required, section three, dogs, cats run at large, and section four, disturbing the peace, a lot of barking, stuff like that. So in talking to our police department, and in talking to Chris Hopper, who does our animal control, they want us to put more bite in this ordinance as far as, right now, you'll see where I circled, four different times, five dollars and twenty-five dollars. The failure to comply with this law should be unlawful and classified as a violation punishable by a fine of not less than five dollars, no more nor more than twenty-five dollars for each offense plus court costs. They want us to go up and make it worth our while to spend time with these violations. So talking to them, they said, you know, anywhere between a hundred, hundred fifty, two hundred dollars, just whatever the council wanted was what they were interested in.
I believe that it needs to be up. I read that. We're still sending these dogs walking, and this morning when I was walking, I saw those two dogs that, they had no lease on them, they didn't want that, they were just running around with this person that they were walking with. So I believe it should be more than a five dollar. I think it should be more than that.
Yes, section.
That would be, that's better than a five. Maybe they'll keep them from being here, or maybe they'll stop some of this not having a lease.
Yeah, section three and section four, we have a problem with those. Three is the running at large, and four is the barking and disturbing the peace. But we don't have much problem with section one or section two, but we definitely, in my opinion, need to go up on them.
Yeah, why, why can't we go with like fifty and no more than a hundred?
Yes, sir. Can we change the phrase to animal, since a couple months ago, we had the pig on the loose?
Oh, I hadn't heard about the pig.
That was what? The police, can you? But can we change it from dog to animal, because there are other domesticated animals in town?
Okay, no dog or cat. I don't know.
What about the pig?
Well, pig would have a collar on it.
Yeah, I don't know.
I think it's just domesticated animal, because if you don't put pig in that, if you put, if you, because if I'm not mistaken, the police had to chase that pig for three blocks, and the German shepherd couldn't even get the pig.
Well, you got a good point there. Mr. Austin, what were you saying?
I was just saying, do it required the pig put a collar on? Do pigs put, you put collar on the pig?
Yes.
I don't know, I haven't ever had a pet pig.
If he's using it as a, they need to have a collar on it.
Mr. Mayor, is that a state statute related to livestock running at large? I think we're talking about pits.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense. We have one. We have one about pigs and chickens and stuff. Yeah, we do have another ordinance about the pigs and chickens.
Okay, well, I'm just.
That's a good point, though. I bet the police, uh, agree with you on that one. How long did they have to chase it?
It was, I heard it was thirty minutes to an hour that they were chasing it. I would have to look at the police for the confirmation of it because it was a topic. Okay, sorry.
That's a lot in the heat.
Oh, but it's multiple times.
Yeah, uh, we want to try to change the amount tonight, uh, whenever y'all decide on how how you want to go.
And you know, Mr. Mayor, this will help, you know, we had, um, a resident that came up and talked to us about the barking, the dogs barking, and, uh, this will help that as well.
Yes, ma'am, that's a good point.
I'm gonna give the change to five dollars.
And I I suggest it fifty, no more than a hundred.
Well, well, can we do one for fifty for first offense and then go up? Second offense? Fifty, not much.
I know Camden does a tiered program. The first offense is like fifty, the second offense is a hundred. That I have said in court in Camden, they do have a tiered program.
And I I think we're not talking about a dog getting loose. The owner don't know what to find. I think you're talking about one that don't have a lease. Want to just run it loose, is that, am I right? Is that assumption? Because I was reading, it seemed like it's talked about. Dog doesn't have. We have people walking dogs without a.
Yes.
And the next thing I'd like to break up is, since the city doesn't have anything about rabies, you need to put something in there about rabies and other, um, animal shots.
That's.
Again, I can't see the ordinance, so.
It's in the.
Okay.
I have excellent.
Thank you, I have not seen people, so I'm just, I'm just a citizen, so I know whenever we tried to restore our dog, they said they didn't have anything for.
I was just telling you that the rent was, you know, that's off.
And the readers say any cat or dog or animals like that, that's, uh, one of the laws.
Yeah, section two about the rabies, first line.
So, Austin, you don't mind if I call the police?
Yeah. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Well, I, may I make them, may I?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion. I move that, uh, we change from five dollars to fifty dollars. And no more than maybe a hundred dollars.
I think that's gonna be high enough.
Well, let me, let me say this, the motion is gonna die nobody's saying, so. Let me say this. We have a, and and I'm not trying to be real quick, but we have things already on the book, some things. But what we do, we can say fifty and a hundred, but you got to do this. I mean, just having it fifty dollars, if you don't follow through on it, it's not, it's not gonna, it's not gonna be nothing. So I'm saying, if you make a person pay fifty dollars, I think you will get their attention because the next time it'll be a hundred, but you got to make them pay fifty first. That's what I'm saying, we say this, we need to follow through on it. And not just let it pass, pass, pass.
So you say fifty.
Same thing again next year.
Fifty for first offense, a hundred for second offense? Is that? Is that what you're, you're fifty for first offense?
Right.
Hundred for second offense?
Right.
All righty. So we got the motion on the floor?
Second.
Second.
Robert.
Yes.
H. Austin.
Yes.
William T. Todd.
Yes.
Amy.
Yes.
H.
Okay, what did you have?
So I know what it's about. So they don't get a warning at all, just the first fifty that picked up? And does that mean that dogs have to attack somebody or he's, uh, dogs is?
Do y'all do many warnings on that? It's.
Usually the first warning, if the property of the owners have been notified, you then, you then feel the connection and then.
Don't, don't we have to post this? As we pass, don't we have to post it so the public will know about it?
Mr. Mayor, you're gonna have to present an ordinance, amending ordinance number two.
Oh, yeah, we gotta amend the ordinance. Yeah. Yeah, we gotta amend the ordinance.
So you don't have a ordinance text.
Yeah, we'll come back next month, so you're going to go with that, the fifty, yeah.
If you notice in section six, it stops with upon redemption, the owner shall be required to, when you stop.
See, I recommended that he goes with fifty dollars first offense and a hundred dollars second offense. And that, that passed, what was it, seven to one? John, that passed seven to one?
Yes.
All right. So y'all are instructing the city attorney to write up the amendment to this. Fifty first offense and a hundred second offense.
My, my other question.
Go ahead.
I was asking, is this just all dogs that are loose, have to have a collar? Or is it, is this their only immunization thing that's on the collar? Or is it the one that had attacked a person, you know?
Oh, we, we have another ordinance for vicious dogs. We have the other ordinance on the vicious dogs.
So that means it's all dogs?
All dogs are, if. Yeah, if they're just running free, uh, they're not supposed to do that and it's city limits. So it's all dogs. Mayor.
Chris was here so he could, you know, tell him how many times he has to go out and, you know, chase a dog. And most times.
Well, he would have been here, but he works a second job and I wasn't gonna make him leave no money on the table because we discussed that.
So people can understand that, you know, we've been discussing it.
But the police can tell you, you know, how much, how often it happens and stuff.
Mayor, back to what Pat mentioned on that second page. On that second page, what she mentioned, that last sentence is not complete. What, what, what do we fill in on that? Do you have a copy of this?
No, I do not.
Let me show you here.
I have Chris on the phone if y'all have a question specifically.
Just, I think there's still a misunderstanding that it's just something that we're doing.
Yeah, it's got five pages.
But people call Chris all the time because I know I've called him several times myself. The dogs running loose, you know, uh, cracking in people's yards, uh, return things. So if he could just explain to, you know, like Miss Meeks, if she's have a proper understanding, how many times he's being called out to chase a dog? You know, to catch a dog or whatever you want to call it in somebody's yard, it's just running loose.
Did you hear a question?
Yeah, yeah, Chris, I was just saying, you know, how many times you have to go out? Because I know I've called him several times myself and, uh, and, uh, you know, running, chasing dogs down, they don't have a collar and you don't know who the owner is and they just running loose up and down the street. So that's, that's what we're discussing tonight.
Because I mean, a lot of dogs, when I go get caught, I don't move out of the room. And I asked the police department, right on the ticket, not the first time that I had to go out. And I mean, twenty-five dollars really ain't enough for the police department to write a ticket. So we'll be looking on the fine, maybe work with police department, buy out the right to take it, they won't have so many dogs for a hundred time.
Can you give them a number of how many times this has happened?
Uh, I, not, not exactly, I mean, because I mean, it's like an intervention, I don't know. The police department called me out, they called me out and asked me about a dog, I'm like, what, write a ticket? Because I mean, if I catch the dog, they still got an opportunity to go back to dad and get the dog. And then right, right back at Swerve Road with the dog back in town, running loose again. It's still ain't no ticket being approved. Which one kind of all those things, you know, from the right.
Do you have a way to check their microchips?
Do you hear that about microchips? Do any of the dogs have microchips that you're encountering?
I have rather random, across one dog, they put some microchip.
And is this gonna affect the dogs that have microchips in them? My dog has a microchip.
I was kind of interested like, I, I want to know, people, dogs will get loose sometime. And I don't think people should be fined if their dog get loose. But then there are those times where dogs from tennis to run, or they go to the track. I, I just want to verify.
I think the police officer said that they give them a chance. I think, I think I heard him say that, and they give them a chance, because they do, they have one chance.
Yes, they do.
And then that's it, and then the next time they have, well, we need to act, they pick up their pot.
Did y'all hear Chris, his suggestion was a hundred and fifty, that's what?
Well, you already passed a hundred for a hundred fifty and then a hundred, let's see, I don't know.
He was standing there, I'm talking to him. And I told him, I was, I ain't writing no tickets for twenty-five dollars, which I don't like. So, I mean, we're gonna write it, write it, maybe work the police department, what else, write a ticket.
Y'all have any other questions for Chris?
And again, that falls up on my, my question is, my dog's microchipped. So, the apartment's in the thing, it says, dog has to have tags that have name, address, or phone number. Since my dog's microchipped, now I'm gonna have to put an additional tag on my dog.
We probably just need to add microchip to that section one.
See, I know that would probably cause the city to call, get new technology for the dogs that may have microchips.
Okay, that's a good point. All right, so y'all want to stay after the conversation, y'all want to stay with the fifty and a hundred or change it or?
I think we ought to give it a chance, fifty and a hundred, done the work, you can always change it.
All right. So they're instructing you to go fifty and a hundred. And add the microchips to the section one, please. All righty.
You know, looking, looking at what we have here, you got other forms of identification, which would be what's microchip. It's already in here. Have a collar, other similar form of identification, that would include the microchip.
Okay. Yeah, however, Eric wants to, uh, other similar form of identification. All right, thank you, Mr. Austin. All right, uh, y'all got any yellow cards back there? We have no citizens communications. Okay, so we're down to discuss our announcements from the council. Ms. Phyllis.
It was brought to my attention about Dewayne White, and I should have mentioned it a while ago, but he lives on Second Street, which is a broad around the corner, probably. The house that is between Danny Cummins and his house is the sign in place.
Tell me an address.
Uh.
Second Street, West.
West Second.
No, we're.
They are happy snake prom.
What's the name of the owner?
Bullet owns it.
Bullet.
Bullet. One of the Bullets owns it, the one that, uh, Janet Barnardale Bullet is who owns it. You're talking about Annie Calhoun's old house.
That backyard makes my backyard, so I know that they're, they're, you know, they've got small children and, you know, or not real small, but I wouldn't want to walk in it, not a wee fat snakes than our yard.
Mayor.
Go ahead.
And, uh, Mary, I'm still concerned by our drainage, uh, project we got going. I, I've been looking at it, I've been kind of keeping up with it. I see, I see an area that we're gonna have, it's gonna be a concern. They, they putting a new carpet in. But the bottom of, of the ditch, I, I think we need concrete lining in the bottom of the ditch. Otherwise, and on the sides, with, with, what they putting in, you're gonna have a lot of water running. And I keep saying, erosion is gonna take the sides out and the bottom is gonna get deeper. And I'm just, I mean, I know what, what we got, but we, we'll find out in the first big rain, you, you'll see. I hate for us to be caught in the situation.
I talked to Karen last week and I, and I told him, I said, me and Mr. Austin want to walk it with you before the last check goes out. And he has no problem with it. He said he could explain everything that he does as engineer to you. And you can explain to him what you think and we'll work it out. So he already knows.
Okay, now.
I told him personally.
Okay, right there across that, uh, I, I guess you call it a bridge or whatever, right there on Third and, uh, where that Third going up towards the project, where does that?
Were you at Arnold?
Arnold, yeah. They're gonna put asphalt back on that, right?
I, I haven't seen the latest blueprint, so I'd just be guessing, I don't.
It's gravel there right now.
Yeah.
You get a chance, look at that, I, I mean, they're gonna have to do something.
We're gonna come and, uh, get with you and have a walkthrough whenever it's time to.
Okay, okay. Because I, I'm concerned that, that, you know, we spend that much money or whatever and you don't get it right done the first time. Because the car will come back and do it again, I mean.
We want to make sure we get our money's worth, that's for sure.
That's, that's my concern, I, I.
Old Split Rail, Bruce talked to them, uh.
Mr. Idaho, uh, two weeks ago, is, uh, finishing up the plans and he's hoping to start construction. That was the last conversation I had.
He was still thinking he would be open sometime in December.
Mayor, can you tell, uh, Phil, about the, uh, there are stakes on people's property? Can you tell us something about that?
Uh, there's a bunch that's going through laying the, uh, internet. That's about the only ones I know. We've had a lot of water leaks lately, but other than that, probably the internet people. There's a couple of internet contractors in town.
Well, they're all the way up in, under, in, on our property. Right back where I had my daycare center, right back where the fence was, and that's too far in New York or anything like that.
You heard anything else, anybody call permits, anything? Probably internet. But if you see them around town, if you see them out there working, just ask them. Is that?
We'll call the period, we'll come, we'll come ask them.
Yeah, we'll get somebody to ask them if you find out where they're at. Okay, anybody got anything else?
Um, August ninth would be that back to school bash on the corner of Green Island Main, Currie's Outreach.
August ninth.
August ninth. Level fourteen, gaming, entertainment, and other activities. Food, games. Then, twenty seventh, July twenty seventh, that is community feed.
July twenty seventh will be the community feed, starts around eleven?
Starts around eleven.
Okay. All right, anybody got anything else? All right, can we get a motion to adjourn? All right. Thanks, thank you.